Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Leval, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity is not permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ron Miller, Bell Surer. I've been educated at University of Oxford and the University of Pittsburgh, among other places. I'm a reporter for the Global Intelligence Information Network, and one that is also in Pittsburgh. I am the GIS candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org is one of our websites. What we do is we seek the optimal information and intelligence to solve social problems from 21 primary disciplines. Regarding council concerns, I favor competitive inequality achievement over description, that means equity, in everything, including choosing candidates for student admission. That means that I approve of the USSC, United States Supreme Court decision, 29 June 2023, USSC 21199, for students, mainly Asians, for Fair Admissions Inc. versus Harvard. Second, I favor abolishing the Pennsylvania School Code 1949. It's this thick, old, anachronistic thing that legalized separating local pre-university school systems across the United States from local governments. That applies to the city of Pittsburgh, and it is a kind of law which is characteristic of the states across the United States. The government of the city of Pittsburgh has no control over the Pittsburgh Public School System. Ms. Mullin can complain until doomsday, you know, about the Pittsburgh Public School System and appeal to you to do something about her problem, but you can't really do anything about that problem because you have no control over Pittsburgh Public Schools. Do you, as councilors, not support my move to get to 2024 PA Code relinking local government and schools? Do you not? I'll take that to be a yes. You do not. I favor inviting Dr. Daniel Freed in here to talk about his AI work with Cicero. Of course, Ms. Gross, you know all about that, right? Ms. Gross, I'm speaking to you, but she's looking at her device or looking down because she doesn't want to deal with this problem. And Ms. Strasburger, you should know about him, should you not, at Carnegie Mellon University? The strategy game diplomacy with humans, you know about that? If you don't know about that, you should know about that. He's at the Language Technologies Institute at Carnegie Mellon University. Fourth, I favor inviting people from Wuhan, which is the sister city of Pittsburgh and Zhongwo, to talk with citizens. You do not? Why has that not happened? And I favor one central distribution center for food under the direct control of the council, and no public funds, and a lot more math to deal with this problem.
Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. It is true that you don't have direct access or control over the school board, but Michael Lamb, who is controller of the city and for the school board, is supposed to be protecting us from waste, fraud, and abuse of taxpayer money. First, do not harm is not just a rule of medicine. Governments shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose, property owners of Bon Air, do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal employees are public servants. My husband was a dedicated public servant. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government is created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. Last year in June, the detriment of Bon Air's school building ordered some intervening, a disruption, and a nuisance property. Back to the apartments that were proposed or anything other than a green space to replace the school, tear it down. The building is a magnet to youth who broke into the building in addition to trespassing inside. Three of the seven had to be escorted out of the building. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been lighted with works. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proved futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for dollars. Tear it down. Now that McKinley Park is no longer in Bon Air, we want the school to become a green space. Shady deals in Bon Air. Even current Pittsburgh Public Schools employees have said the solution is to tear the building down and create a green space. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenna DeFrancisco. I don't see her online. Is there a Jenna DeFrancisco with us? If not, our next speaker is Poma Chakma Yahelihi.
In my town, Alabama, I'm Grand Inga, Chief E. Poma Chakma Yahalih. I'm the founder of E. Puffin Forestry Arts and Culture of Aboriginal American Stewardship, the chief of the Ongu'ngu'ang nation, Grand Council Chief Member of the Air Force Federation of Aboriginal American People in the Delaware Territory, you call Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We've invoked the Delaware Treaty and our constitutional government-to-government relationship established with your Congress here in Pennsylvania. Aboriginal American indigenous peoples are absolutely the most marginalized people upon our ancestral lands as it relates to our rights and access to all of the resources of our land, as we're the only people not foreign to our American homeland. I have put in many hours of time and currency to create a good pathway to food for our people and yours in many areas in this territory. And what is evident is indigenous peoples have not been considered in the least until we brought our plight to light here in this city. As an indigenous member, the Food Justice Fund, steering committee member of the United Way Food Fund, former co-chair of the Urban Act Working Group, Charlie member, former member of Bugs, working with Grow Pittsburgh's Farm and Nursery, and the Green Grocer and others, I've brought food resources to the Lincoln-Limington Chadwick Community, pre and post COVID. I've been a grassroots land steward, assisting in the creation of the Farm and Home World and others. I've been working for years with Black and Brown and other identifying peoples on various food and land projects as an Aboriginal. I continue to stress the importance of the Aboriginal indigenous food forestry, remediation, restoration, and conservation of these indigenous landscapes you call the city of Pittsburgh with indigenous native fruits, vegetables, herbs, and grains, as it once was before colonization destroyed it. This is important to our people and our lands. I have protected green spaces for food production, and I'm the first Aboriginal American chosen by the USDA to review the USDA historical 2501 grant after years of discrimination by the USDA where hundreds of millions of acres of farm land were stolen from Aboriginals under our tribal rule, and many of them who were reclassified to colored and Negro. And as a direct bloodline lineage of the first planters and seed savers of the Americas, I know what it looks like to have abundance of food and other resources for our people and Aboriginal American mound builders and planters. Steer our seeds with the world. Ninety percent of the fruits and vegetables now grown in Africa come from the Americas, and many in Europe and Asia are also indigenous to the Americas. Lest we not forget, we fed the colonists and assured their survival. Our people are the first original land stewards and the designers of climate resilience, seafood systems, genocidal bioswells, three sisters planting methods, permaculture, and food forestry. Now again, City Council and Mayor's administration stand, you can stand in honor of your oath to support and protect and defend the United States Constitution, the Pennsylvania Constitution, your humble charter, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax. With this legislation to bring remedy to our people and our lands while you assist also in helping your people on our lands. And I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Haleilhi Chaknan Kuni.
In my town, Alabama, greetings, but let me honor the life of you. I am an Aboriginal American matriarch, and my title is Yajology Chanel Keen, located in the Delaware Territory, as you all will call Pittsburgh. My statements today are to invoke my people's constitutional indigenous rights. We are the original beings, the original stewards of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the onway-onway from our great law of peace. My people are acknowledged, again, my people are acknowledged in multiple maxims of law and documents such as the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the ADRIP, the UNDRIP, House Congress Resolution 331, 100th Congress Second Session, and list continues. The second, the city is under the jurisdiction of the state. The state is under the jurisdiction of the government. Are you going to honor your oath to the Constitution? Are you going to continue to commit 18 U.S. Code 2381 treason, 18 U.S. Code 1091 genocide, forced assimilation, eugenics, indoctrination, colonization, 18 U.S. Code 242 deprivation of rights under the color of law, 18 U.S. Code 241 conspiracy against rights, kids for cash, kidnapping, child trafficking, and the list continues of the nefarious actions against my people, the Aboriginal Americans. Oppleger oath to the Constitution, oppleger Agentisca folks ancestors oath, oath, oppleger slog ancestors oath to the Constitution. We are not to be confused with the Title 25 Native Americans, who are the immigrants, foreigners, citizens, and naturalized citizens under the jurisdiction of the United States, which is a corporation, AKA a business. You are on stolen lands, and you have stolen our natural resources. Are you going to continue to walk in the footsteps of your many nefarious immigrant ancestors such as Walter Ashby Plecker, a physician, the first Virginia State Register of Vital Statistics from 1912 to 1946, a promoter of eugenics, a discredited movement nefariously pressuring state agencies to reclassifying my people as colored. The policy's legacy was effectively to erase Indians as an identity and has made it difficult for Indians so-called to gain state, federal recognition. My people or the Aboriginal Americans have been reclassified as so-called Indian, so-called colored, so-called Negro, so-called Black, and so-called African American. We cannot be from two places at once. We cannot be immigrants. We cannot be foreigners, and we have not been naturalized through your 10 steps of naturalizations. We are not your abusers. You are the first sloths, which means that you are the first slaves.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up at the top of the hill of Bedford Avenue. It was sometime, some time ago, and it might have been a couple of months, that they had on the radio 90.5 FM, where Snoop Dogg was talking about this artificial intelligence, and he was questioning it. And then you had someone that actually helped make it, and he was also saying that there's something to be worried about. And what I see is, I heard him when they said this, they had an example, black man in doctor's office talking loud, acting irrationally. What should we do? And it said, call the police or go to jail. White man in doctor's office, talking loud, acting inappropriately. What should we do? Call doctor, doctor's appointment. Automatically, when the black person is speaking, if they get loud, call the police, put them in jail. A white man can do the same thing in what you say, oh, he needs to see a doctor. I'm bringing this out because there's times that I come down here to speak, and the attitudes and the hostile environment that I get here, I feel that Jen's had been listening to that artificial intelligence. Jen's done called them up, and they didn't say, well, Ms. Brown, come, you do your thing. Ignore her. Work on your computer. I'm talking about, do you realize that anytime you got five council people in the room, that's the quorum, and four of them on their phones texting that there's only one that's listening, and the media should have been scrapped then? I come down, and I'm telling you, I want you to understand why I'm coming. I've been coming for years, and I'm getting tired. But when I, just recently, there's a young man that lives in my building, and he had been the editor for the radio station, it was a black radio station, now lives in our building. Okay, so when he was leaving, and there was a white man that was taken away, it was a man that used to come down here with Jim Furlough, and I seen him. I said, you need to come down here. And I said, the way they treat me. He said, come on, Yvonne. They hogtied Jim Furlough so you can go through the same. I said, I don't want him looking up at my dress when they hogtie me, to take me out of here. But Jim Furlough, I don't care what anybody says, he fought for us. He made sure, when I was asking for the books, they said, we don't have any more of your, our rules or something. He said, that one time, he just finally said, oh, come on, make sure you give them to them. They made you to put, they actually put a place for you to put the books, and you didn't even do it then. Because at first, I used to take them up to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that takes us to our Standing Committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1454.
Bill 1454, Resolution, Amending Resolution 109 of 2023, which authorized a cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories, excuse me, equipment, support, infrastructure, and professional services for use by City of Pittsburgh departments by increasing the total spend by $900,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $10,365,991.
Motion to hold for three weeks, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, bill be held three weeks. Our new paper is Bill 1668.
Bill 1668, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $10,000 Within the 2023 Operating Budget From City Council Salaries and Wages Regular to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first new paper is Bill 1662.
Bill 1662, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in lieu of taking by eminent domain on certain properties necessary for completion of a slight remediation project along Saline Street in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Entering into these temporary construction easements will come at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of $3.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just brief.
Councilwoman Borbert?
So I haven't, I mean, I'm fairly certain that I know where this slide is, but is there anybody to just kind of clarify so that I can respond to residents? Yeah, it should be, yeah, it would be Domi.
I don't see Director Lucas. I'm checking, see if she's online.
Um.
Not.
Well, I guess, motion to hold one week, and then I can just.
I'd hate to hold up a.
Yeah, I don't like to hold it up either.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold up a landslide.
Yeah.
What is it?
Yeah.
What is it?
May I?
Sure.
Yes, Councilman Kraus. Thank you. If we can preliminarily approve, I'll be happy to work with Councilperson Warwick to get the answers that she wishes. If we can't complete them, I'll be happy to support a recommit law on Tuesday.
You good with that? I'm good with that, too.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I just, because I know this landslide, it's important, but I just want to be able to respond to constituents.
We have Director Lucas?
Come on, right now.
Step right up.
Take a breath.
All right. Kim Lucas, Director for the City of Pittsburgh's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
Eric Settler, Chief Engineer in the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure.
We're on Bill 662, which is relative to slight remediation along Saline Street.
Sure. So I'll start with the notes, and then Eric, if you have anything that you want to add, tell us there was a specific question.
Yes, my district, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. So this is a small, relatively speaking, landslide between Saline Street and Ivandale Street. This is not down at the end of Ivandale where the road is compromised. We will construct a rock embankment to stabilize the area. The work is mostly on city parcels, but is also partially in the backyards of three properties on Saline Street. These easements will allow us to do the work. There's no set date yet, construction to start and finish this year.
Okay, great. Would you mind, just in case I have the residents contact me, I can, you know, just so I can let them know that that's what's going on? Just send me the addresses.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
This is a quirky question. $3 is going to cost the city of Pittsburgh, and that's entering the temporary easements. Is that a dollar per property? Is that how that was arranged?
Yes, so, yeah, we're.
Couldn't get it down to 50 cents here?
I'll go back and bargain a little harder, yeah.
No, I was just curious. So that's a dollar, you have to do that legally, I guess.
That's the way they were drafted, but, yes, legally, right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1663.
Bill 1663, Resolution Providing for Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Bridge Over Route 51 Near Woodruff Street, also referred to as the Parking Lot Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $625,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost not to exceed $1,250. Future resolutions will authorize a project-specific service agreement.
Motion to approve, please.
Second with discussion.
Councilman Kraus, did you have discussion?
I don't think.
Okay. Madam President?
Thank you. This is in Mount Washington, in my district, it borders Councilman Coghill's district. Could you talk a little bit about, I know there's been some controversy about the business that wants to keep it intact?
Sure. So we have secured Transportation Improvement Program funding through the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission to fund a project for the bridge over State Route 51, which is Sawmill Run Boulevard. As you know, we have more assets than the city may responsibly be able to, you know, keep in great condition, and we've identified this one in the combination of its condition and its relative importance to the transportation network as an asset that makes more sense to invest in the demolition of than to fix. Right now, it only serves a private property, for the most part, for their private business operations, and that's why from a transportation network consideration, it's basically a privatized bridge at this point.
So what happens to that bridge and that property? Because we gave permits for that business to be there. So what happens now with that business?
They do have access to their property from another.
Okay.
Another access point. So the bridge is not the exclusive access to their property, is my understanding, Eric, if I'm misunderstood on that.
That's correct. I mean, they do have access off of Sawmill Run Boulevard. I mean, in the conversations they've had with us, that they like to use the bridge to facilitate their loading and unloading. You know, that's something our law department has been looped in on, and we'll have to have those conversations as the project develops.
Are there any current meetings or conversations happening?
So our law department has been engaged with the property owner because I think we've seen the news that there's a lawsuit that's pertaining to this matter. So they're the ones that I think are leading the conversation at this point. This action today would kick off a design process, and we would not anticipate the design to start imminently. It would be within the next two to three years because we know that we've got this outstanding property issue.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to hold for at least one week till I have a chance to sit down and really talk with you and the law department, and Councilman Coghill, who also borders this district. So it's probably, the business is probably located in your district.
It is.
Yeah. So that we can at least have that conversation.
Can I speak to her?
Yes, please.
Councilman Coghill?
Okay, thank you. So we have to have a design for the demolition, is that right?
I will defer the technical question to Eric.
Yes. So we need to go through, since we're using the money from SPC and PennDOT, we need to go through a PSNE, a plans process. The demolition of the bridge itself would be a very basic plan set. You still need clearances, make sure your right-of-way, your utilities, things like that are being dealt with. The other place that there could be some, some design work needed if we remove the bridge, what we need to do to leave the site on both sides in an appropriate state. Do the hills need to be stabilized? Is there small retaining walls? The road underneath, do we do anything with the road while we're there? So there could be some design tasks.
In that design, the closing of the road, all that's included in the design?
Yeah.
And the design's almost a million dollars. It might be cheaper to tear it down than the actual design is to tear it down, is that?
So that's the budgetary number. So we don't have any numbers for what the actual cost will be. But yes, there's definitely some cost involved in getting through the process and just looking at all aspects, and not just tear it down, but make sure that everything's being taken care of properly.
So I had multiple conversations with the owner before the legalities, the lawsuit took place, and I think with their biggest challenges, they have bigger, it's big warehouses back there. They store a lot of heavy stuff. Their egress from Route 51 is not quite satisfactory for these bigger trucks. If and when we decide to tear this down, which looks like we're going that route, which I don't disagree with, would probably, I don't want to see the figures to repair it, but would Domi work with this owner to give him a better access from 51 in order to make everybody happy? Does that sound like something we can do?
We would certainly work with them, just like anyone, through the permitting process to try to accommodate. It's a tough site.
I don't know what that would require.
Do you mind if we call Director Pollock also to the table? Because he knows the numbers. Do you mind? I don't want to overstep anybody. Okay. Director, do you mind? I don't want, I don't want to circumvent the director herself.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I want to say, Director, while we have a moment, while he's sitting down, I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing in the district, too, and a long list of projects that you put forward in the capital budget. So thank you very much. I appreciate.
Director of the Office Management and Budget and Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, I don't, I don't have specific costs beyond what Director Lucas and Chief Engineer Settler have shared. I can just share from an overall evaluation of the location. It's not currently being used, though it is, it exists as city right-of-way, being that it is a bridge. It's not currently be used in that fashion. It's being used essentially as a parking deck for vehicle storage for the adjacent business. It's not open as a street and not meeting any public need for right-of-way. Nonetheless, it is our obligation under its current ownership to maintain, and in its current condition is potentially at risk in concert with our evaluation of our structures.
This is the worst rated bridge that we have, I believe, in the top three.
I'll defer to Eric to answer that question, but it's certainly in bad shape.
It's in bad shape.
Yeah. So, so, so we have a situation in which something that previously conveyed vehicular traffic across Route 51 to approximately the, what's the name of that tunnel? I apologize.
Wabash.
Wabash, thank you.
It carried a railroad. It was in that mode of transportation.
To the Wabash Tunnel, but no longer does, and since functions as an auxiliary parking lot to an adjacent business, is imperiling traffic on Route 51 below. And so I concur with Domi's assessment that our most, from the city's point of view, in order to. order to, because it's not serving a publicly beneficial purpose, and because it exposes us to pretty significant liability, given its current condition, the demolition is the right course. The business currently utilizing it, I'm sure values that access, but it's not guaranteed in that it is public right-of-way, that we no longer have a need for, and this, not an obligation to maintain. They do have access elsewhere off of Route 51 to the, as you've heard folks from Domi commit to, to the extent there are ways their access to Route 51 could be improved. We're very much open to those conversations. That's subject to engineering limitations, it's kind of a relatively exposed turn on a limited-access highway with a median, so I, we can't guarantee them turning in both directions, for example, there's a median there. But we can help them within reason, but I don't think it's responsible for the city to continue to maintain this infrastructure solely for their benefit without their ownership, which is the current condition.
No, I agree with your assessment. It's a bridge to nowhere for the city. I understand the business utilizes it, and it's valuable to them. They can buy it for cheap if they wanted to, and then they could make the repairs if they, if it's that important to them. I'm asking, well, I'm asking, I'm sure it's for sale if we, maybe it's not, I don't know.
We don't, we'd have to consult with the Law Department on the exact structure of what that would look. I can tell you, we don't have a publicly beneficial use for the infrastructure. And so our best assessment of it is that, given that fact and given its current condition, we don't have a use for it.
I agree with that completely. You know, I sympathize with the owner. I just ask that we work with him whether we get better access from 51 somehow, some way, just because he does, he stores a lot of equipment, a lot of material back there, and he's vital to our economic engine in the South Hills.
Sure.
So, okay, no, that's it. No, again, I agree with the assessment, it's, we're not gonna utilize the bridge ever, so, you know, and I just like to, what does this do to the lawsuit? Does it end it, or does this, we have to let the attorneys decide that, or what?
We've been instructed that we should continue with our project development as charted, and if that needs to change, law will let us know.
Good deal. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation?
I'm gonna abstain till, until you and I have a chance to talk. I was gonna hold it, but I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you.
That takes us to Land Use Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 1698.
Bill 1698, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX, zoning, Article Four, planning districts, Chapter 909, planned development districts, Section 909.01 SP, specially planned district, 909.01.P, SP 9 Bakery Square, by supplementing the certain provisions of Chapter 909.01.P with the addition of new sections, 909.1.P, C through F.
Motion to approve.
Approve discussion?
Second.
So, do you defer, please?
Yeah, I defer to this one, too.
So, this is going to be sent to the Planning Commission, their evaluation, but I want to begin this conversation for the first time.
I want to begin this conversation for the first time publicly. I have been working on this directly for over a year. The developer and the community have been working on this for several years. What this is, is an expansion of the Bakery Square site into the East Side Village. Right now, there's a, it's where the Staples and the Medons is, and formerly Club One, which I was a member of for, I don't know, thirty years, until it closed and was torn down. And this will be an extension...
I'm getting a visual.
This will get an extension, I don't, I'm not. This will be an extension of that site, but the most important thing is maybe, for the first time in maybe the history of the city, is with a specific community benefit attached to it. In terms of doing development, and we've been part of what we call the Larmor Miracle, and it's sort of a three-legged stool, that is, the resources of the community, the resources of government, and then the resources of private interest. And so we put together a collaborative, came together with a comprehensive community plan, brought all the stakeholders together, and then we were fortunate enough to win a choice grant of thirty million that was leveraged to a couple of hundred million of dollars to build about four hundred units of affordable housing in Larmor. If you paid attention, you're now starting to see private investment in Larmor that's gonna be at a private market rate, apartment building, building in Larmor. And now what this does is it takes the East Liberty expansion, and it has the developer pledging resources to Larmor. Not only do they commit to putting affordable housing onsite in East Liberty, but they are also committing to raise the money to build a hundred houses in Larmor for homeownership, and for both low-income and moderate-income people. And if you look at the whole development site with the apartments that they'll build onsite, along with the housing in Larmor, you're looking at upwards of seventeen to eighteen percent total affordable housing. This now guarantees the future of Larmor. They also are putting money into the community groups. There's more to it. I'm going over to this, the community benefits part. Two of the community groups have already agreed to it, the Larmor Consensus Group, East Liberty Development, have already sent support letters, and have, we are grateful to be a part of that. I will host, of course, community meetings, talk about this, Larmor. So they're also gonna hire technical consultants to provide the technical resources. So not only are they gonna raise the money to build the housing, which is about twenty, twenty-five million dollars, they're also gonna put money directly into the capacity of those neighborhoods. When I first stood in council, as a new member, I stood in Bakery Square, which was a hollowed bakery, there was no development. I made the promise that no one believed at that moment. I said that the rebuilding of Bakery Square will just be the gateway of the rebuilding of Larmor, the rebuilding of Homewood, the rebuilding of Lincoln Leamington. During my time on council, we've seen Bakery Square become the first phase of it, become fully, first and second phases, really, and my prediction has come true. Because of Bakery Square, we have seen the rebirth of Larmor, and now with the expansion of Bakery Square, I'll make a bold commitment, you will see the complete redevelopment of Larmor, and that will spill over into Homewood and Lincoln Leamington. Of the work that I've done, this is now the natural progression of that work, where we've helped put resources into community-based organizations, we have advocated and been successful in putting government funds, and now we have private investors putting private equity into that community, which will make that miracle fulfilled. And so we are, we are grateful to be a small part of this, of leadership. I look forward to having that conversation over the next few months. This is, though, this expansion of Bakery Square is vital to the rebuilding of Larmor, the rebuilding of Homewood, and the rebuilding of Lincoln Leamington. It is how this work, it is my most mature understanding of how this work is done, and hopefully, I believe it will be a national model. I also have to wave the URA really, because they've been kind of privately in the background, because they will be a participant in terms of this trade expansion, and I want to thank them for their knowledge of helping us, of getting people all on the same page. This is a historic moment. This is going to be a historic development that will be a game-changers for low and moderate-income communities. And so with that sort of explanation, there will be, you know, over time, you'll get to see the complete project and all the bells and whistles of it, but I want to at least have some initial conversation of why I support it, why I'm introducing it, and how important this is for the future of Homewood, Larmor, Lincoln Leamington, and I believe the future of our city. And so with that, it's gonna go to the Planning Commission, they'll send us back a report, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Madam President.
I just want to say real quickly, Reverend, you have done a tremendous amount of work in your district, and I think you know development better than any of us, and you talk Councilman Lavelle. I'm gonna, I want to get a little bit of that, but I don't want to change the fabric of my neighborhoods, but I really do want to see some of that development stabilize my areas, what we need. We need stabilization kind of development happening. And I do want to say the URA has been part of things, and so has the mayor, with the Ferrywood projects that are happening down there, and, but there's other places. I have, we now have twenty-four neighborhoods in District Two, that's a quarter of the city represented in District Two. So I'd like to see more of the development occurring in that area as well, in southwest of the Pittsburgh area. But I think mostly for us, it's to stabilize. I don't want to, I love, I love, I miss the days going down Fifth Avenue and seeing, you know, sitting on somebody's stoop and talking to them, and people that lived there forever. I miss those days and seeing those, that kind of architecture even, you know, with the housing and stuff. So I love that kind of thing, but I also love what you're doing, and I think that you've done a tremendous amount of work for your district. And sometimes it goes unappreciated, but I think sometimes it's because it does change sometimes when you do too much development or, or development in the area. And I think that you've taught us all a little bit, that we're gonna, we're gonna have to start taking a little bit more lessons from you and Councilman Lavelle, and getting just a little bit more in our districts. But congratulations on the work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? If not, Reverend, I'll make your motion.
A motion to hold and send to the Planning Commission for, I think that's the proper motion, right?
Report of recommendation.
For, what is it? That.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be sent to the Planning Commission. Next, Councilman Wilson, do you want these two bills read together? So can we read Bill 270 and 465 together?
Bill 2022, 270, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title VII, business licensing, Article 10, rental of residential housing by creating a new chapter, 783, short-term rental permit program, and Bill Number 2022-0465, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V, traffic, Article VII, parking, Chapter 549, residential parking permit program, 549.08, visitor permits, non-resident permits so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Question, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to hold for a week, and in that week time, I'd like to update you, Council President, as to what we've been working on with the Law Department.
Oh, good. Thank you. I hope there is an update. Thank you.
Yeah. So I want to hold for one week, and then within that week, we'll talk. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held for one week. That takes us to Bill 1393.
Bill 1393, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article I, Section 902.03 zoning map, by changing from R1DL, residential single-unit detached, low-density district, to UI, urban industrial district, certain property roughly bounded by Kelly Street, Fifth Avenue, Frankstown Avenue, and the Allegheny Valley Railroad brilliant line, all in the Allegheny County block and lot system, 12th Ward.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing. That takes us to our new papers, beginning with Bill 1665.
Bill 1665, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article II, base zoning district, Chapter 905.04, RIV, rubber front districts, to add fresh food access as a performance point option.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing, Bill 1666.
Bill 1666, resolution at no cost to the city approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D, and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G, for Allegheny General Hospital entitled Hospital Institutional Master Plan, dated March 2023, on property zone EMI, Educational Medical Institution District, 22nd Ward, First Council District.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for cablecast public hearing. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Warwick. Our one new paper is Bill 1664.
Bill 1664, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and any amendment or amendments thereto with Remini Street, Inc., to extend the term of Unifat software support and services for J.D. Edwards, Oracle Technologies, and Oracle Database at a cost not to exceed $595,131 over four years and five months.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Second.
Yeah, so this is, we had an original contract for our ERP system for two years with a one-year extension, and we're extending now for four years and five months. It's going to be a little bit more this year, because, just to get it in line with our, another contract, J.D. Edwards. I don't know if folks want to, if folks have questions, the IMP team is here to answer. Anyone? No?
No.
No questions? Okay. All right, well... I mean, do you want to come up and just briefly? No, you're good? Okay, okay.
I have questions, I'll call.
Thank you.
I just want, I will say this, she's one of the best engineers out there.
That's true.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? And our last committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, we have one deferred paper, Bill 1612.
Bill 1612, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA for the city to provide annual contributions of up to $2,500,000 to support a 2023 issuance for affordable housing at a sum not to exceed $62,500,000 over 25 years.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Second.
Thank you all. As you recall, we held this last week, and I want to thank Council President Smith for making sure that council members got all of their questions answered, and to our Finance Chair for arranging for an executive session. Last weekend, we had bond counsel for the URA, and bankers, and lots of people from the administration and the URA administration. And we have amendments in front of us that are co-sponsored by myself, Councilman Lavelle, and President Kale Smith, that put some conditions that I think reflected council members' questions and concerns, and also priorities for this dollar amount that commits $2.5 million per year for 25 years, at a sum not to exceed $62.5 million to support affordable housing. So I will, I think, let members maybe see if they want to have comment before we motion to amend, or would you prefer I just go ahead and...
Let's talk about the amended bill.
Okay, so motion to amend? Motion to amend?
Second with discussion, please.
Let me, let me clarify, motion to amend by substitution.
Thank you.
Second with discussion, please.
With discussion, Councilman Crowe?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, if I can refer back to Councilmember Gross, could you review the amendments for the edification of council in public at large?
Certainly. There are somewhere as clauses added to the original resolution, and again, the original resolution is 2023-1612, if you're trying to follow at home, and you can look it up on Legistar. It talked about the lack, the whereas clauses, the resolutions talk about that affordable housing is most severe for the lowest-income tiers in the city, and that the City of Pittsburgh and the URA are working together for community goals. The, in Section 3, there's a new, it's a new section that says, "The agreement or agreements shall include language that address certain conditions that include the following conditions." And there are four sets of these conditions. The first set say that the use of proceeds shall be consistent with goals. Those goals are respecting and stabilizing existing communities, and adhering to existing adopted community plans. To create quality affordable housing opportunities, including the preservation of existing deed restriction, sorry, existing deed restricted affordable housing and naturally occurring affordable housing. To maximize the impact of resources by prioritizing projects with lasting affordability of at least forty years, or the ability to... least 40 years, or the ability to revolve and replenish funding availability, which we talked about at the table a little bit, which is meanings lending money so when it is repaid, it can revolve again into another project that, consistent with the goals of the program. And ensure that households and other beneficiaries of the investment meet qualifying criteria and program qualifications. Notice that that section one aren't really binding conditions, but it's a call for the URA to behave consistently with council's desires. A kind of a suggestion, as we were. Number two and number three are conditions. If section three's heading that says shall include language that address certain conditions that include the following is binding, which is, "Within 90 days of the initial issuance and receipt of funds, the URA shall submit a report to City Council detailing the proposed use of funds." I'll skip a little more detail there since I'm spending a long time reading out loud, Councilman. Number three is, "The URA shall provide an annual performance report of the issuance proceeds to City Council within 90 days of the end of each year." And then, again, not conditions, but reporting outlines that should be filled in, like a fill-in-the-blank report, asks that the report include existing deed restricted affordable housing numbers, numbers on naturally occurring affordable housing, and the items that you heard from the top of, of the condition, the suggestion, suggested conditions. Funds received from the bond issuance shall be subject to an annual audit by the city controller and submitted to City Council by July 1st of each year. So we feel that these are, will help both the public and council members see what are the outcomes of the funds and be able to see kind of how, how much the funds are, how much we're getting for the money that we're spending. And, Councilman, I would assume that this is in your email because the city clerk's office put it in front of us at the table.
Yeah, Councilwoman, Mr. Chair, may I make one comment on the amendments?
Yes.
Just under section one, I have a minor reservation around adherence to existing adopted community plans in that many of the underserved areas that we're speaking about have not had the resource or capacity to establish a community plan. And I'm a little worried that that will continue to pass them by because they don't have community plans. And I don't, I know there'll be lots of conversation, I don't want to take up too much time on that, but I, I think I would like to kind of flesh that one out a little bit more with members that are interested.
Okay.
Deb. Councilman. Director Pollak, come up.
Councilman, are you, are you done, Councilman Kraus?
Well, I, if, if you're opening, are we going to vote on the amendment and then open for discussion? I just, I want my turn of discussion, but I just, I want to be mindful and respectful where I fit in on that.
Okay. Ideally, I would ask all members to vote on the amendment, so we're then discussing the actual amendment itself.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Councilman Kraus, on the bill as amended?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have guests coming to the table?
We can. I'll ask-
Is that up to me to do? I-
No, I'll ask Director Pollak to please come forward.
Bond counsel is online as well, too.
Jake Pollak, Deputy Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget. There are also folks from the URA in chambers and on the call available, depending on the questions. But specifically to your question, Councilman Kraus, that condition is crafted and would be carried forward into the agreement in such a way that clearly states that where community plans exist, they be adhered to. But by definition, our approach is to respond to applications for support from wherever they are generated. So in, in the absence of a plan, a, a application would still come in the door, so to speak, and be eligible to receive funding. And in the absence of a plan, essentially that condition would not be operable, would not become a barrier to an application being received from a neighborhood that does not have an adopted plan, however. Were an application to be received from a neighborhood that has an adopted plan, that plan would be considered as a critical criteria for consideration of the deployment of funding. So I understand your concern and appreciate it. I don't believe that it presents a barrier to us, not I don't believe, I can assure you it doesn't present a barrier to us considering and approving funding in neighborhoods that don't have adopted plans, rather in neighborhoods that do have adopted plans. It ensures that those plans are respected and adhered to in the course of funding approval.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate clarification. So while I appreciate the amendments and am supportive of the bill as amended, as I'm sure you're aware, Director, I still have some reservations around this being the time for us to actually go out to bond. And I want to make certain that I am speaking with accuracy, so I will not be offended in any way if questions that I ask you correct to, to help me better understand where we're, where we're headed. My, my first question, Director, is, do I understand correctly that we have, or the URA has about $60 million in ARPA funds that are intended to be expended towards affordable housing projects that we have yet to launch? And if that is indeed the case, I, I would really be very much interested in your thoughts of how we could launch, or at least seed the beginning of our comprehensive affordable housing plan through the expenditure of the $60 million before going out to bond.
So that's not entirely correct, Councilman. There are $65.9 million in the current ARPA plan dedicated to the Urban Redevelopment Authority, but of those, only $46 million are for housing-specific programs. Other funds are pledged to commercial projects or other projects that are unrelated to housing. For example, $2 million of those funds went to allow for the purchase of Hayes Woods, and others went to the Avenues of Hope program, which is primarily oriented towards commercially investment, outdoor dining, et cetera. So of the, of the $65.9 million of, of ARPA funds dedicated to the URA, $46 million are for housing. Of those, $37.9 million are dedicated to programs that promote homeownership. So that only leaves $8.1 million of ARPA funds that are serving the development of units in the rental market. Certainly, those homeownership investments are well warranted, highly needed, and highly valuable, and could see further investment from this issuance. However, given that the overwhelming preponderance of presently dedicated ARPA funds are funding ownership programs, we see with $8.1 million in ARPA funds dedicated towards rental development or preservation, that there is further need, given the, the need in our city for both affordable homeownership and rental opportunities, more demand for public support for rental opportunities than is provided in that ARPA allocation. So we imagine that this, the funds that could be generated from this proposed issuance in the first instance could equalize or, or balance out that support between an ownership-based portfolio and a rental-based support portfolio in the, say, first year of operation. And then beyond that, could continue to capitalize both our ownership and our rental support programs over the next three years. So I, I should also add, beyond everything I've said about sort of just establishing the numbers in the existing ARPA portfolio, that most of, in fact, I'm double checking, I believe all of the programs, excuse me, all but one of the programs that impact housing generally at the URA are under executed agreement between the city and the URA. The one that is not, but is nearly there, is the Agreement Around Community Land Trust. So we are, at this point, in a position where we have executed cooperation agreements between the city and the URA for transfer of those ARPA funds. And most of those programs have begun drawing funds and deploying their resources. So we're in the midst of putting all of that ARPA funding to work. And yet, in addition to deploying those funds over, over the remainder of this year and next year, we can foresee a pipeline of projects coming in where these resources will be valuable, and thus it is a timely additional infusion of resources.
So I always appreciate your coming to the table, fully prepared, and today is, is no different. So I, I very much, we very much appreciate your due diligence in, in coming fully prepared today. I'd like to back up just a hair. It, it's such a broad conversation to discuss affordable housing. And in the way that you just broke down those numbers, I think you, you began to paint a more comprehensive picture of what it is that we, as the city of Pittsburgh, are, are setting as our goals to achieve for a comprehensive and holistic affordable housing strategy. So I, I don't know, Sushila would be helpful with this, or, or Director, if you, you want to continue, you're welcome, however you wish to do this, but could we kind of just very, you know, broadly define what our, our, our comprehensive plan to, to bring a, a consistent, ongoing, uh, supply of affordable housing to the city of Pittsburgh over the next 25 years, and kind of break it down to the different platforms that you were sort of expressing in your comments?
I just, so, so Executive Director Nemanie Stanger has joined me at the table, and I'll, I'll defer to her in a moment. Broadly speaking, Councilman, as you pointed out, affordable housing falls into two large categories, of which there are multiple subcategories. Those two large opportunities being affordable homeownership, meaning supporting the ability of city residents to purchase and own their housing. That can take the form of direct ownership, it can take the form of ownership through a community land trust, which is a structured form of ownership that allows them to own a portion of the property. And for a, a trust to own the underlying land, it can take the form of limited, limited equity co-ops or other forms of cooperative housing, all of which are envisioned in this process. The other form it can take is rental housing that is made available at an affordable rent. That affordable rent is a rent that is below market rent, but not the same as subsidized, i.e. housing authority managed and maintained, or voucher-receiving property. So we need to fill in both those pieces of the puzzle. The way in which the URA envisions to meet that demand, I will defer to Sushila.
Uh, Director, may I ask just one more thing before we, we go there? Are we also talking about rehabilitation of existing units?
We, we classify that as preservation, and yes, that is, that is included.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Sushila Nemanie Stanger, Executive Director of the URA. So, Councilman Kraus, thank you for asking that question. More broadly speaking, we do undertake the production and preservation of housing units throughout the city, in addition to the construction of new and rehabilitation of housing units. And so I often refer to the Housing Needs Assessment that the City Planning Department has advanced and recently updated and issued. It calls for a diverse range of housing types throughout the city based on particularly, particular community needs. And so there is no one-size-fits-all solution to this. In fact, I'm appreciative that Reverend Burgess brought up the-
Did you have a concern?
I, I thought he was asking about housing types.
I probably-
Councilman Kraus, okay.
Sorry.
And so I, I am appreciative of Reverend Burgess bringing up the, the Bakery Square example, at, you know, in, in our pursuit for, you know, more broadly creating quality jobs throughout the city, we also do advance in our long-range comprehensive plan to deliver on the needs of communities has to also include affordable housing.
If I could just add quickly-
Can I, we can-
Did I, did I address your question?
That they can coexist, that we're not talking about perhaps removal of large blocks of property that are clearly salvageable for preservation, that fill-in housing that's new can exist next to revitalized or preserved housing could exist next to property that might even be a few units existing together for rent.
These things can coexist, yes. We can see, we can-
They can. Is that, is that the desire of, of us as the city of Pittsburgh and yours, the URA? I mean, that would be my hope.
Yes, the desire is mixed-income neighborhoods, mixed-income development. It's widely known that concentration of poverty exists because of putting too much affordability on one geographic area. So we do seek mixed-income housing solutions throughout the city. Does that answer your, does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. So as you, as you can see, and I'm sure members are already aware, I'm, I'm very much struggling with this, and as I've said a number of times, not the spirit of it by any means, just the finances of it, and, you know, without, you know, overstating it. It, it's the years of being under state receivership and, and getting our, our fiscal house in order, and wanting to make certain that as I exit the council, that I'm making wise decisions, that we are going to continue to keep our fiscal house in order. So if it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to bring bond counsel in and just ask a couple questions about the actual bond itself.
Okay.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello, Councilman. This is Andrew Marr, from Dentist Carter Grigsby, Bond Counsel to the Urban Redevelopment Authority.
Yes, and Antonio, you're with PNC, right?
That is correct, Councilman.
Thank you, I really appreciate your, your being here. Can you, can you talk a little bit, you know, we've done a lot of discussion, and I'm greatly appreciative that we have, but much of it has, has been offline. And so, you know, we're ultimately holding these meetings for the application of the public at large. And so I would make, like to make certain that the, the, those that are engaged in council are hearing what it is that we're ultimately committing to on a financial end of things. So I don't, Andrew, I guess it would be you that might want to talk about the provisions of the taxable bond, why we're going out for a taxable bond, and what we can expect to receive and what we can expect to pay back. Hope I'm not oversimplifying.
Councilman, if I may briefly, before-
Sure.
Antonio and Andrew respond to your question, I just want to clarify for the, for the public and, and council, that the matter before council is not the issuance of debt, and thus their answers would represent the terms or conditions or, or environment in which the URA would be issuing debt. The, the matter before council is the obligation of funds to the URA on a cash flow basis that would, we anticipate would satisfy that debt service. I don't mean to suggest that it's not relevant for you or other council members to ask questions of them about those debt terms, I believe that's totally relevant, but just so that we're clear about what we're discussing. The, the city would not be obligated to any repayments of debt under this arrangement, and the city would not be offering a bond guarantee under this arrangement. So the city would be obligating the transfer of funds, and any terms related to debt issuance would be the sole responsibility of the URA. would be the sole responsibility of the URA, should they, with approval from council, have a secure revenue stream with which to repay that debt. So all the information that the URA's bond counsel will be providing is about the debt terms that would apply to the URA and not to the city general fund.
Yeah, appreciate the clarification, Director.
Yes, thank you. That is a very important point, that the debt is what they call non-reforce debt to the city, meaning any bondholder who does not get paid on the bond for whatever reason cannot sue the city for repayment. But concerning the taxability of the debt, the reason why we're going to market with bonds that are federally taxable is that permits the URA to use those funds with maximum flexibility for projects in the city, without having to worry about compliance with code provisions of the sections of the Internal Revenue Code. So the URA can be responsive to the needs of the city with respect to affordable housing, without having to worry about IRS agent knocking on the door and auditing the use of those proceeds. That is the short fundamental answer to that question. With respect to the amount of proceeds and the yield on the actual debt, with respect to the numbers, who we can expect, I'll defer to PNC on that.
Okay. Hypothetical, if for some reason, the city, the city, us, you know, future electeds were to change the desire to make the 25, or the 2.5 million applicable to this loan at a later date, where a different council might make a different decision? First of all, is that possible, that that could happen? And if it did, would you be able to understand what the ramifications of that might be?
So again, Councilman, I don't, I'd like to ask, because bond counsel represents the URA and not the city, I prefer to answer that question. In a future event where the city were to not meet the obligations of the cooperative agreement that council will be authorizing here, that would be council's right under the annual appropriation process. The agreement will clearly articulate that those future allocations are subject to appropriation risk. However, the city would then be subject to potential liability for breach of contract. That's different than liability to the bondholders. So once again, if I could articulate a scenario, in a scenario in which the city continues to meet its annual payment requirements, and as Andrew mentioned, for whatever reason, the URA were not to turn those funds around and pay bondholders, then the city would not be at risk. The city would be fully insulated in those circumstances. We met our obligation under the cooperative agreement, and all risk would accrue to the URA for not meeting its debt service obligations. In a scenario in which the city defaulted on, or broke its obligation under the contract to make an annual appropriation, the city would be at risk for breach of contract to the URA. It would still not be under risk to the bondholders, because their only contractual relationship would be to the URA. However, we would be in breach of the cooperative agreement, and thus subject to potential legal conflict with the URA under the terms of the agreement. So we are, that distinction is important, because it affects the ways in which our financial risk is measured by financial institutions, the financial markets, the credit rating agencies. But it would ultimately still become, this legislation is a long-term pledge to make the annual transfers, even in a scenario in which it does not take the form of debt and is thus not included in our mandated state debt reports and, you know, impactful of our, the state-required assessment of our liabilities, which is important. It is still an obligation we're making contractually. So we're translating, it's not a debt obligation, but rather a contractual obligation.
Understood. And again, appreciate the clarification. The, I guess the purpose of that question is the volatility by which we have existed these last three or four years now, and seeing just how quickly the world can go off the rails in something like a global pandemic that we could not possibly have prepared for in any one shape or form, and to understand just how different things can be from one day to the next. Read a piece this morning about how New York is struggling to filter downtown office spaces, and trying to understand how that might look to be housing conversions, and if they are housing conversions, then what is the affordability portion of those conversions? And, you know, sitting on, you know, that kind of real estate that has become kind of volatile, maybe that's a strong word, just trying to get a better understanding about, you know, where we are going in the housing market, and how we can, like I was referencing earlier, in a very mixed-use kind of environment, what, you know, a holistic housing strategy might look, you know, post-pandemic, and God forbid, not knowing what could be on the horizon in the near future. We are, we're going out to commit for 25 years, and, you know, we can see clearly, you know, how quickly those things can change. So my questions are sincere, I'm just trying to have a better understanding of the kind of commitments we're making, and what we'll ultimately receive that from that.
Yeah.
I'm going to wrap, because I know there'll be lots and lots of conversation, but I just want to give Antonio an opportunity to speak, if he wished to do so. We do have PNC at the table, if there's something that I missed that he wished to offer.
Thank you, Councilman. I think everything was captured very appropriately in terms of the approach, the rationale, as well as the commitment from the city to the URA was reflected very appropriately. So at this stage, I think everything was contained in the responses.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And then just for this moment in time, and I may wish to have second round, Mr. Chair, when the time comes, just wanting to have some level of assurance, and we're all seeking a level of assurance, I understand that, that Hilltop neighborhoods will, I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, but that they won't be forgotten in the process in some way. And, you know, Oakland and Southside Flats largely are, you know, are real estate healthy pockets in the city, but I do worry about Hilltop neighborhoods. And as I reference back to capacity to develop neighborhood plans and those kinds of things, funding available to those neighborhoods to develop neighborhood plans, and to assist in strategies to do infill housing, and to, as Councilman Burgess likes to say, good development hangs on good development, and how we can, you know, make a continuation throughout Hilltop neighborhoods, that they come up as beneficiaries of the actions that we may take today.
So I think, Councilman, what we find, generally speaking, is that with relatively limited resources dedicated to these particular needs, that we face the difficult and unenviable choice of funding those projects that are most fully financed, the surest bets, if you will, because their overall package of financing is the strongest, and thus the gap that we're required to fill as public agencies is the smallest, and thus we can spread limited resources as wide as possible, but they still only reach those projects that are kind of operating in the most advanced way. And that has tended to concentrate in neighborhoods that have been pursuing this type of relief for the longest, and have developed the longest experience and expertise with navigating those processes. By significantly expanding in a relatively short period of time the number, the amount of funding available, we envision being able to meet that need and expand beyond it into new territory, including neighborhoods where the need is certainly great, and the opportunities are abundant, but where we've not previously been able to provide support for lack of resources and the need to focus our efforts on the surest bets. I think that Hilltop communities, among other pockets within the city, are among those places that could benefit greatly from having that broader purview to spread the wealth, if you will.
Yeah, appreciate your comments, Director. Especially Sushila, especially as it relates to restoration, there's some really magnificent properties throughout Hilltop that could really benefit from the restoration aspect of this kind of a bond funding. And then, as I wind down and leave this for other members, I do want to take a moment to recognize the work that the Gani administration has put into the Beltsifer School. You know, many of you members know how diligently worked on that project over probably six or seven years. But the, what ultimately brought it across the finish line was the support of the Gani administration to take that out for funding, and that project was funded, and we're about 13 to 15 million dollars in the restoration of the Beltsifer School and infill housing that will populate in a number of different places around that school. And again, I reference, as Councilman Burgess often says, good development hangs on good developments. So I don't want to leave the conversation without implying that there has not been consideration and contribution to those neighborhoods. I guess maybe I'm just being a little bit of a control freak as I exit here, being a little bit worried that it will continue, and that people that I know and love and call friends, you know, for 16 years, you can't, you know, you can't just represent constituency without thinking of them as more as friends than anything else, just wanting to make certain that they are okay, that they get their fair share of, you know, of the pie. So I appreciate everyone that came today, I appreciate members for allowing me this time to just speak as long as I did. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll relinquish the floor, I may have comment on second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Actually, Councilman Gross just sent me a text that just answered my one question that I was going to ask about the Housing Needs Assessment. And Councilman Wilson, is that it? Who has a copy of it?
Yeah, I just got it sent last week out there asking about it, so I'll send it to members now.
Yeah, thank you.
May I?
Yes.
The Needs Assessment update is in draft form. I know Sushila mentioned it, it's not been fully finalized or published. I understand that Councilman Wilson has it in his capacity as chair of the Supervising Committee in advance of its full release. So just a note that it is, when it is completely finalized, it will of course be distributed publicly unto all members.
Well, I want the councilman to distribute it to members, so, as chair...
That's council's prerogative, I'm simply noting...
But members can't distribute it publicly.
I'm noting, yes, I'm noting for the public that until it is fully final, which we expect imminently, but it has not yet occurred, that it remains in draft form.
Okay, that's good to know. Because part of what I'd like to know is, is there any breakdown in student housing, the requirements, or the number of people that are students that are on the waiting list for affordable housing? Anybody know if that breaks down? Because it's my understanding, there's a lot of people on the list, the waiting list that we're saying that are need affordable housing, that are students. And so I'm kind of curious if we're building housing for the universities that we can, you know, get upset about if we're not paying taxes, if we're helping to offset that by building housing. So I want to know if there's the breakdown of students, the number of students on that list? And if there's not, I can call the Realtors and get it, because it's my understanding they've done it.
I don't want to comment on a document that's not yet finalized or for public distribution or its contents. I can tell you that we are not directly financially supporting the construction of student housing. Council does routinely receive zoning items for its consideration that involve institutional master plans or other forms of zoning and planning approval for the construction of new student housing units, specifically dedicated to student housing, typically by the universities or their development partners, but they're not per se subsidizing that work. There are certainly affordable projects that the city, through the zoning and planning review process, considers which may be taken advantage of by students and by extension projects that the URA financially supports, where students might find housing. But dedicated student housing, in recent years, has been solely pursued and funded by university applicants with their own resources, and the city's action is in providing the necessary planning approvals, not financial support.
Okay, I still would like to see a number, a breakdown of that. And I think overall, I just want to say, I think that most of us are concerned, there's a lot of concerns with this, you're asking us to do a lot here, and I think we're trying to do this in a way to work with the administration for the goals that they would like to accomplish. So even though I'm nervous, I am supportive and will vote for it. But I just, I just mentioned to Reverend, I said, when I keep hearing about the mixed-income housing, I said, I understand that there's a need for mixed-income housing, and I do understand the impact it has on people when you just have concentrated poverty, I understand that. But a part of me, it hurts, because I think there's a lot of poverty that was on Fifth Avenue, there was a lot of poverty that was up in the Hill District, and we destroyed that as a government, and we destroyed what was there. Being poor doesn't mean you're bad, and being poor doesn't mean you shouldn't have to live on it. There's lessons people living in high-income housing can learn from poor people. And so it's that part that's kind of like, I feel like we miss it a little bit, even though I understand the reason, I understand the need, it's kind of hurtful to think that there's people that, because their income, maybe they feel less valued by us because of things like this, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, appreciate it. We've heard quite a bit already, and I wanted to have our...
Can I just interrupt you real quickly? I do want to thank Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Lavelle, which is I wanted to do initially, and our Budget Office and our amazing solicitor, for all working together to get some amendments forward that we all felt. And the council as a body, everyone here had pitched in at some point to get us to a better place, and I just want to thank you all for working together. You're amazing people, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to hear a little bit more detail from our Budget Office, so I was going to ask Pete McDevitt if he could join us at the table, because it's important for both the public to understand that our investment in affordable housing is much more than this bond. And it's actually been quite significant, the amount the council has allocated in the last three years at least. So if you include 2020 through this year, Mr. McDevitt, I had Mr. McDevitt pull us some numbers to look at the, just dollars that council has moved to the URA for housing, which is above and beyond the ARPA allocations that were already covered in this discussion with Councilman Kraus's questioning of Director Pollock. So Pete, can you introduce yourself and talk about some of the numbers that you've got in front of us, in front of me at least? Yes, thank you.
Sure, Peter McDevitt, City Council Budget Director. Yeah, so quickly, before the Standing Committee meeting started today, I took a look at the capital budgets and operating budgets from 2020 through 2023, and excluding the 40-some million in ARPA funding, there's about $45 million since 2020 that has been obligated to the URA for housing projects.
So adding those two amounts together, right? And so if you add the 40 or so million of the ARPA funds, plus the other sources of funds, or things like CDBG, other Pago, other HUD funding, and of course, it's been $10 million per year from the Housing Opportunity Fund, which is also out of our general fund, and will continue to be 10 million a year. And so 2020 through 2023 already adds up to 93,171,000 or so. And so adding, moving forward from today, adding the bond fund would be another, let's say maybe 30 million, if it's a range of 25 to 40 million, which would bring us up to 123 million. And then if we continue, of course, the 10 million per year of the Housing Opportunity Fund for 2024, 2025, and 2026, that's an additional 30 million. So that takes you up to about 153 million. Of course, the Housing Opportunity Fund money runs out every year, runs out every year. And so that's gone in just six months, so you can say 20, at least 20 million of that has definitely already been spent. of that has definitely already been spent. But that's money that we would be, basically all has to move by the end of twenty twenty-six. So, you know, CDBG even is more patient than ARPA generally, it runs out, but it does have expiration dates. Our Pago funds would be the most patient parts of this, probably, and we know that the ARPA funds have an expiration date, and then we know that the bond funds, we've been told, are, I'm not sure how binding that is for you all, but the goal was to spend it in the next three to four years, I think is what we've said, or what we've been told. Sure, Director?
A couple of different timelines to articulate there. In both the case, just to answer your questions, maybe generally about timelines, as it relates to CDBG funds, given the federal requirements and our various look back periods and reporting requirements, we're generally required even for those projects that are committed to capital projects, to spend them within about six years. In the same vein, we look ideally to spend city general obligation bond funds within six years, I'm sorry, our ideal is three years, no more than six years. And as it relates to this proposed issuance for housing, the intention is that the proceeds would be fully expended within three years.
So again, everything is kind of coming down to twenty twenty-six then, right? So the, for example, the twenty twenty CDBG for housing development was about two-point-six. The twenty twenty-one CDBG was three-point-four million. So that adds up, if you add in the four million from CDBG for twenty twenty-two, and the three million from CDBG for twenty twenty-three, all under the rubric Housing Development to the URA, you know, that line itself is thirteen million. Have those funds been committed? Do you, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to play gotcha, because this is a lot of detail all at once, but.
Yeah, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have the spreadsheet handy?
I have Pete's spreadsheet, so.
I hope this will be for you, but.
Yeah, so it's, I think, both important for the public and council to understand that, again, this is all money that council has appropriated to the URA. All of them, you know, the titles are things like we heard about land trust, housing for affordable units for PHDC, the Laramore Choice Awards, of course, the Housing of Two-D Fund, of course, office space conversion, the preservation programs we just heard about, which is preserving currently affordable housing so that it doesn't flip back to market rate, or flip to market rate. And these are the kinds of things that we're, like current programs, the bond would also kind of be spread across. So.
I'd have to cross-reference.
Sure.
What you're showing with what I have, which is from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, we received sixty million, and we've obligated or spent down fifty-three of that, resulting in thirty-three-hundred units. So I'd have to cross-check your spreadsheet with.
It's eighty percent obligated, then perhaps the ninety-three million is also eighty percent obligated, which would.
We also have an unprecedented amount of LIHTC awarded from PHFA right now, six.
Give us a little more detail on that? I'm not sure that we've had that on the record in this discussion.
Would you mind if Evan Miller, Director of Housing, he knows that off the top of his head?
While Evan's joining us, I'll note that about eighty percent obligation rate, which includes both funds expended or funds under contract for a project that may not have drawn them yet, is consistent with OMB's records around funds transferred to the URA.
While Evan pulls up his handy spreadsheet, I'll just say.
And obligated generally means that there's a project, its funds are committed, you might not be able to see the project built yet, but the funds are locked into that specific project.
That the entity advancing the project is typically building something and then requesting reimbursement from those funds with invoices that they have already paid, and so we have funds set aside that are approved, waiting for completion of milestones in order to transfer them, but those funds are as close to spent as they can be without actually being spent, but certainly well committed and underway for a particular purpose.
And my name's Evan Miller, I'm the director of, Evan Miller, the Director of Housing with the Urban Redevelopment Authority, to answer the question specifically about LIHTC projects that Director Nemaney Stanger was referring to. Over the last three years, the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency has awarded, on average, about five LIHTCs, low-income housing tax credit projects in the city, and each project requires gap financing from the URA, typically in an amount between one-point-two million and sometimes up to two million dollars, so that they're an incredible way to generate production, but they are certainly a strain on our finances, but in a positive way that yields a positive outcome.
So that's fifteen or so, you said averaging in the last three years, five per year, and so those are in the queue, and some of them may be built, but some of them may not be? And can you give us a kind of idea of how they are spread around the city, any kind of specializations that they have? My district has benefited from a LIHTC deal that had fifty units, they're usually around fifty units, right, for senior housing, another one that had preference for veterans housing, people might know the Penniman Tilda, and then a third which preferences for people with disabilities, which is, we just had the ribbon cutting last year at, on Butler Street near the Doughboy. So all located in neighborhoods of opportunity, mostly near bus lines and other kind of community assets. How about this pipeline?
I think you've touched on what a lot of the highlights of some of these other projects have been. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were in the West End for the opening, or the groundbreaking for a senior development called Cedarwood Homes. We've had other projects that are the adaptive reuse of former schools, one of them is the Beltsover School in District Three, as well as the recently closed Leche School Project in the Hill District. So we're seeing a wide array of new construction, also rehabilitation. We recently had a ribbon cutting for the project on North Negley called the Carina, which takes the old synagogue located near Negley and rural. So the LIHTC program unlocks a lot of opportunities for developers to receive additional credits or additional preference for going above and beyond and trying to enhance the housing options that are here in the city, and really, it helps to further the URA's mission and the city's mission as well.
Thank you. So while there's significant funds on the street, we think maybe eighty, or at the URA, eighty percent of them may be obligated to current programs or to actual projects already, even if the public hasn't been able to see them or get on a waiting list for the units. And they are not just LIHTC deals, but there are, again, there's a lot of dollars in the pipeline around preservation, office space conversion, community land trusts. There's one that's for sale homeownership, but I'm assuming that's not construction? Is it thirteen, is it fifteen million?
Correct, that is the.
One of the ARPA lines?
Apologies for interrupting. That's the Own PGH Home Ownership Program, which provides deferred financing to aspiring homebuyers that are below eighty percent of the area median income.
Okay. And so I'm going to go back to Director McDevitt, who only had a couple of, a chance to chime in there. Is there, were you able to kind of concur that these funds, whether or not, you were having a hard time from your side of the city budget access to see if what had been expended and what had not been expended?
Yeah, just looking at the J.D. Edwards system while sitting in council chambers, I had a little bit of limitations, but it did look like there was, at least from the last quarterly ARPA spending report, that the Office of Management and Budget put out, that was in March thirty-first, so I think it was one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars had been spent, and it does look like some additional funding has been committed to the URA since then, but I wasn't able to identify exactly what that was for. Jake might know.
Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah.
Not to interrupt, Councilman Wilson has to go pick up kids, I believe, so I just want to let him register a vote.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
President, I have a for this bill and all remaining bills. Thanks.
It's the last one, but thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
If you have much longer, I'm giving him an extra fifty.
Director?
Yeah, if I may, just to clarify my earlier point, and I believe Director Nemaney Stanger's point, the eighty percent obligation figure relates to the CDBG, the non-ARPA allocations over that time period. So the CDBG home and other funds that have been appropriated and expended. Of the total sixty-five-point-nine million in ARPA, again, only forty-six million of which is actually in reference to housing, twenty-one-point-nine have been transferred from the city to the URA. So that is a smaller percentage and reflects just sort of both the timing of our agreements and the structure of those agreements, which typically provide partial funding upon agreement execution and further draws as projects advance. So I imagine what Director McDevitt is seeing is transfers from the ARPA Trust Fund to the URA, but they would not be reflective of the entire amount approved for the URA because we're making those payments and installments as work advances. Of that twenty-one-point-nine, the URA has obligated six-point-eight with further projects, I'm sure, in the pipeline but not yet approved by the board, and fully dispersed five-point-seven. So those funds have begun to move, funds have begun to move from, certainly funds have been approved through the execution process, and initial payments have been transferred to the URA. They're then in step with that, moving projects through the pipeline to disbursement. But it is fair to say that among ARPA funds, that it's not eighty percent, it's about thirty percent. But on the other hand, we have executed agreements for fifty-point-three million of the sixty-five, so the vast majority is eligible for transfer and is basically, we're moving those funds in installments as deals progress. So the broader number was in reference to CDBG funds, not ARPA funds.
Thank you. It's a condition in the housing bond for the URA to do reporting to council. We also do get our quarterly reports that are kind of, I mean, you can click more on them for a little more detail, but they, and they're great graphics, but I think we don't want to run the risk of having several different sets of reports without having a kind of comprehensive, integrated understanding of how the parts are fitting together, I think is a great way to summarize it. And so I think that's just work in front of us as we move forward, because again, this council has allocated now nearly already a hundred million dollars to housing, to the URA since twenty twenty. This today, vote today could be in the range of twenty-five to forty million additional. We know that we've already committed the Housing Opportunity Funds, each annual allocation coming up in the next three years will be in another ten million per year. And the public kind of, I think, deserves to not have to dig around too badly, too much to find out, kind of like, what is the progress, where are these projects going, how do these pots of money fit together? So I think that's work that will be in front of us as we kind of continue to see these projects come to fruition and talk about them here at council. But I'll thank you all for kind of filling in, I think, a little, some of those details, and that's all I have now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burgess.
I'll be. Hours late. First of all, let me, let me from the very beginning, register a I vote, I'll ask maybe two, three questions, and then I'll say two or three sentences, and I'm done. In the city of Pittsburgh, is most of the development that's occurring in Pittsburgh affordable housing?
No.
Period. Is the majority of development in the city of Pittsburgh affordable housing?
No.
Is it close?
No.
That is, the bulk of development right now is private equity, and Lavelle and I, Councilman Lavelle and I showed a report that those do not go in African-American communities. Ninety percent of that money does not go in African-American communities. If council and the government did not support affordable housing in African-American communities, what would happen to development in those communities? Would they occur mostly?
Well, go look in the West End, you'll find out.
Would they occur mostly?
No.
No. So the reason government has to do this, is if government does not do this every year, even with our best interest, with our best investment every year, more people need housing. So we're losing this fight, I mean, very, very clear. Council's doing great, this is great. And so I want to make it very clear, and we're not talking about, there's no, there's no discussion of how much market rate housing is being built in our city at tremendous rates, and, you know, Councilwoman Gross complains about it, but I will take her problem. Give me, you know, sixty, seventy percent of the development in the city of Pittsburgh in my council district, and I'll laugh all the way to the bank, right? Huh? Out, 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 doesn't matter, I'll take that too, right? I'll take it. We have to do this, this is our moral imperative. Some people are gracious enough to say that I'm, along with Councilman Lavelle, perhaps it's architect, or at least the person who started talking about this first. And so there are three things I will say about it, and I'll register my I vote and let it go. There are three things from the very beginning I've articulated beside this bothering, so I want to at least put this on the record and hope that you think about it. One is that my number is closer to a hundred million dollars. I've been arguing that we need a hundred million dollars of borrowing, and so if we're going to take whatever this number is, in my mind, this is not a one-time event, but this is the first of a series of events to get us to about a hundred million dollars. So I'm thinking over the next probably ten, fifteen years, some number like that, we'll get to that a hundred million dollar borrowing amount, you know, in maybe three to four years, so three, if you do thirty, thirty-five now, and then three years later, thirty-five then, you know, nine to ten years, you can get to the hundred million. So that's the first thing, is that I want to articulate, at least in my thinking, and what I've been arguing about, is this is the first of several borrowings. Two, I would suggest that there is a serious conversation about prioritizing the avenues of hope as the launch of these dollars, because we were careful in the avenues of hope, of which I am hopefully also part of its architect, we was careful to make it citywide and to make it in the business districts. And with the avenues of hope, you get the double bang. You not only get affordable housing, or mixed income housing, you get business districts. And when Councilman Lavelle and I were blessed enough to meet with President Biden privately, that's the thing he told us to emphasize was this home, this business development in neighborhoods. And avenues of hope will give you that double bang. So not only will you build affordable housing, but you will, because of the way you can do it in terms of subsidizing underneath it businesses, you'll get the double advantage of not only building mixed income neighborhoods, but of putting business districts, rebuilding the business districts. And the third thing, and that's just my advice, I think you know this already, in our thoughts, this would be the last end, not the first end dollars, right? This would be gap financing money, that this would be, you know, if you spend this money on four percent deals, it'll be gone in three or four deals, right? Because those would have like four, fifteen million gaps apiece, so, you know, two or three of those, and it's gone. But that this would be leverage to use all the available resources, and that it would be the last end. And so that's my thinking, I will be supportive, and I've spent my life, not just on council, I've spent my life trying to rebuild black families, strengthen black individuals, rebuild black communities. It has nothing to do with me being on council, this is my life. And so whether I'm on council or not, it doesn't matter, I'm going to be spending until I'm, you know, in glory. God called me to be a witness and to argue for black people, specifically, black families, the places they live, the amenities, and I. And I, Larmor, we believe, is the best example of what's possible. But whether I'm on council, whether I'm in my church, whether I'm home on my porch, I will be involved in the rebuilding of the black community because it has nothing to do with being a member of council. It has everything to do with my calling and what I believe is right and just. The Bible talks about what you do to the least of these, right? And that we need to prioritize the least of them in the least of these neighborhoods. And so I support the bond. I support this endeavor. I look forward to doing even more in the future. That's it. And that wasn't brief, that was brief enough.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
I knew I was right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did you get a I vote? Thank you.
And, you know, I want to thank Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle for your work on this in the past. And I want to thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for your amendments to make this a little more palatable. Still has a bad taste in my mouth, though, I will tell you, but, you know. So I guess my first series of questions are really probably for Andrew and Antonio. Antonio PNC is our underwriter, correct?
Let me just again briefly clarify. You can direct your councilman, your question to whoever you like, councilman, but just for the sake of clarity. PNC is the financial advisor and lead underwriter for the URA.
Right.
And Andrew is the bond counsel for the URA because it will be the URA issuing the debt. As it relates to the city's financial impact and obligation here, because the agreement does not directly obligate the city to the debt, it will be myself and Director McDivitt who could speak to you about the, and the council solicitor, the city solicitor.
I completely understand.
I just want to draw that distinction.
Right. I get it. I completely understand. It does affect our yearly payment, though, as to how we take this bond out.
And therein lies my point.
Gotcha.
The fiscal impact to the city, based on the structure of the deal, is solely related to the impact on the annual operating budget transfers and the reserve fund. It is not a debt obligation of the city. So the URA's financial team can speak to the market conditions in which the URA is entering the market, but the city is not directly exposed to those market conditions by, solely by approving this item.
No, I understand that. Nonetheless, I have the questions regarding, and I'm allowed to ask those to these.
Just for the public record.
Gotcha. Yep, appreciate that. So just to clarify this for me, we are going to investors, and I don't know who to direct this question to, I would think Antonio or Andrew, we're going to investors saying, the URA is going to the investors saying, we are going to finance $62.5 million. We are now, we can't get a figure back from them as to what amount they, the principal amount will be. They might say, oh, we'll lend you 30 million. We'll lend you 40 million, and we might say 25 million, right? So we won't know that answer until it goes to market. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're not committing by any means. If we take out a $62.5 million loan and they say, oh, we'll give you $20 million, certainly that's not satisfactory for anybody. We have an option to bail out, right?
The URA board would have an option not to execute on the agreement at that time if these funds are pledged via this agreement. That provides me an opportunity, if you'll permit me, councilman, to also mention a provision that we intend to include in the cooperative agreement, not directly related to your question, but let's say that, let's say that the number is sufficient for the URA board to move forward with the borrowing at a certain interest rate, and then in future years, better interest rates prevail. We intend in the cooperative agreement to reserve that were the URA to refinance the bond, basically get a better rate on that debt in a future year, that the proceeds would either, as first priority, the savings would be plowed back into the program, thereby increasing the amount of benefit. And in a scenario where that's not feasible, say it happens in year 23 of '25 and the amount accrued is not, you know, doesn't make sense to plow back in, that the benefit would accrue to the city in either a shorter loan repayment period or a reduced payment. So the city would, if we're not able, if we're not able to, through refinancing at some hypothetical future point, increase the amount of investments in the program, which would be the first priority, that the benefits of a refinancing would accrue to the city and not to the URA.
And we spoke to that Friday. So it's a callable loan. We can refinance it at any time. There's no provisions on it.
There are some limited provisions in the early outset period, I would imagine, but for the, for the sake of general argument, yes.
So we may or may not have an opportunity. So what is, what is the number as to whatever the investors come back with in the URA's mind saying, good deal, no, not good deal? Is it 30 million? Is it 35 million? Is it, is there a number setting interest rates aside?
I think we'd need to sit down with Tony at PNC and take a look at the pricing that comes back, right? And if it's not competitive, then we need to take a look at that.
Reassess.
We need to take a look at that.
Right. That brings me to my question. This is a taxable bond, and I know from investor's point of view, they, they don't want a taxable bond. It's, and I understand, if I heard it correctly, it's for flexibility for the URA to spend and issue these funds. That's why it's taxable. But surely that means a higher interest rate.
Yes. Relatively speaking, relative to a tax exempt bond, and I can speak to this generally speaking as relates to the city's borrowing as well. Relative to a tax exempt bond, taxable bonds are more expensive as it relates to interest. The inverse value of them is that with a, with a plan like the one that the URA has to allocate the funds as applications come in over a three-year period, then we, it provides the flexibility to support projects as they enter the application pool rather than having to have them fully articulated upfront. For example, the city issues tax exempt debt because when we do so, we do so to support an already appropriated capital plan. Tony can confirm conditions as of today, but when we spoke on Friday, he articulated that the spread between taxable and tax exempt is currently smaller than, or rather, that those two rates are closing in on each other. In either case, the credit rating of the URA is strong and thus supportive of a favorable interest rate, even in a taxable position.
I'd like to know the difference between that. Once we go to market, we will know, is that right? We'll know what the taxable rate is. We won't know what the non-tax rate is.
I suppose it could.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Antonio to jump in here.
Thank you. And yes, Councilman, yes, you, we will show throughout the process, the spread between prevailing tax exempt municipal bond rates and taxable municipal bond rates to show the difference. And again, it's more the flexibility and use of the proceeds that is driving that status, that tax status of fully federally taxable bonds versus federally tax exempt municipal bonds. And just a point of clarification, there, there are buyers for both. There are distinct investors that look for taxable bonds and investors that look for tax exempt bond funding from municipalities. So that market does exist on both sides of the tax status.
Good. And this is Antonio, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Antonio, you know, being that it's a refinancable or callable bond, does that also increase the rate?
If you have a standard call feature on a municipal bond right now, that does not increase the rate. If you would seek out a non-callable bond that would lock in rates to investors for term, investors do actually offer a little better rates because they know the bonds will not be refunded from them. But again, that would take away the flexibility of refinancing from the issuer.
Okay. Thank you, Antonio. That settles as far as the bond issue goes. For me, again, it's not that I disagree that we have a shortage of 17,000 units. It's not that I feel like there, I don't feel like there's a emergency crisis for affordable housing. Councilman Gross alluded to it earlier, the money that we currently have, 10 million per year from Affordable Housing Act to the 70 million, albeit not going into same categories, and I understand that. And then to throw in, you know, a $62.5 million bond at this point, it's more, again, a philosophical difference for me. I can't justify getting possibly $25 million and spending $30 million or $50 million in interest. It's just unfeasible to me. I just can't, I just, wait, let me finish and.
You could have bought my house.
But, you know, I would much rather have preferred, I would vote for committing $2.5 million payment that we're committed to anyway. Over the next 10 years, we have no debt. We have $25 million we're putting towards it. That on top of the 10 million we have coming in from the housing fund and, you know, other funding sources that we have still, I believe, even the land bank could be tied into this in some, some fashion. But, you know, to, again, do we need this big cash influx? Is that what we need right now? Why are we not say, why don't we just say $2.5 million a year, which we're all committing to today, and for the next 10 years, that's $25 million that we could invest in affordable housing? You know, or do we need it at a faster rate? Do we need this lump sum money right away? Is that the argument here?
There's a significant demand for affordable housing, and I think that if we look at the age of our structures alone, we have structured homes and buildings, multifamily buildings that are 80 to 120 years old. They have reached their useful life. We are seeing significant demand. If anyone here owns a home 80 to 100 years old, we, you know, you know. So, so it's that coupled with the need to build the supply.
Yeah. $25 million over 10 years would put us further behind the eight ball, as we are presently experiencing with funding these programs primarily on what I'll call a cash flow basis, right? An annual allocation of 10 million or.
For right now, we're just doing 30. We'll, say we get $30 million, we're doing that for 25 years without anything else at the table, which, that's what really scares me is the other, you know, and God bless, I know Rev, I know his good intentions, but, you know, to, to think that we're going to go through this every year and go into this kind of debt every year.
No. Not, no one will, no one will propose it annually. I, I think that we are, depending on prevailing market conditions and the success rate here, would be willing to consider to come back to council in three years and discuss this topic again, once these funds are fully.
Once we see the success rate.
Correct. But, but to come back to your point.
Yeah.
30 million over three years, just as an example, would mean an additional 10 million per year focused on the production of units that will have affordability restrictions on them for 40 years, and will have 25 years to pay that back. That means that the last 15 years of that affordability will, think about when you, if you pay your car off in five years and you keep it for 10 years, then the last five years, you own it for free. Of course, you have maintenance costs and other things, right? But so, so we would, we would have free and clear affordability for a 15-year period between the bond repayment period and the, and the end of the affordability restriction. In the meantime, we have all of those units within three years as opposed to taking 10 years to build them, right? So we can actually catch up on the demand lag. And that, that only presumes the 30-year period, total borrowing, and I'm hopeful that we'll receive more than that.
Yeah, I understand that. Now, when you say we'll have those units, we're funding programming, and we can count units with programming. So whatever program we fund, I don't know, 10 different ones, five different ones, I don't know what, what's in play in here, but we'll be able to count units. Is that right?
Yes, because the funding will run through programs and invest in projects that apply to those programs. Yes, and we'll be able.
But these programs already do run, right? And they're already funded by multiple sources, correct?
And dramatically oversubscribed, meaning that there are far more, far more eligible applications that could be funded than actually receive the funding. If we could fund every project that comes in, we could, every project that meets the requirements for funding, then we could dramatically expand in a relatively quick order the number of units that come online.
And you'll be able to put a number to those.
Pipeline. Evan, are you, do you have that handy, a pipeline?
Evan, what I'm asking is this, okay? If, say we put 30, say we get 30 million, okay? We put 30 million within the next three years, are you going to be able to say we, or is it just theoretically with what the programs have done? Are we going to be able to put a real number on it?
No, there will be discrete measures of how many units were in any given project.
So these programs now have that data now, then, obviously.
Yes, yes. So last year, in 2022, we produced 511 units throughout our suite of programs.
What's the number one program that helps us in this?
It's, it's a bit, I mean, as far as dollars out the door, it would be our rental gap program, which provides financing to developers that are looking to create or preserve affordable rental housing. But I think if you're thinking about visibility and people in the community, our homeowner assistance program, which helps low-income existing homeowners make necessary repairs to their homes, that's one of our most popular programs. We certainly have the most, some of the most clients compared to our other programs through that long waiting list as well. So that's another benefit of this is that as we have more funding available possibly for the development-facing initiatives, that maybe we don't have to close the application process for, say, this homeowner assistance program and can keep that running for at least longer throughout the year and turn out more clients in a given year.
In either case, those concrete measures are already available in the URA's existing quarterly and annual reports. So they're already measuring the production of those programs. And by providing additional capitalization to those programs, those existing reports would reflect the increased capacity through these investments.
One final question. If, Antonio, if you're still on the line, and maybe, I don't know, maybe you can't answer this, maybe you can. What does it cost if interest rates go down considerably, we're sitting here, two years from now decide to refinance? What does it cost the city of Pittsburgh to refinance? Fees-wise, not savings?
Councilman, fee-wise, again, that would be determined upon when the potential refinancing issuance went into the marketplace. But on average, just similar to the city's direct GO indebtedness, you're, you know, you're somewhere around 1% of total fees on a bond issuance in terms of all of the service providers of entering the capital markets.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so again, it's more philosophical for me. I just can't understand with spending 30 million to get 30, to go into debt 60 million. So I'd rather us, and again, I know we want to, we want to do everything today, and I know the urgency of it all, and I hear it from everybody and every, you know, person that sits at this table. However, I think $2.5 million a year on top of what we already are supplying should be sufficient for, to at least get us moving. You know, I just, I just can't, I just can't go $30 million in debt for a loan of 25 million or whatever the figures are. So, so when that comes back, when we go to market, Antonio, and when that comes back, we will have a sure number, we'll say the investors are willing to give you 40 million for that 62.5. Is that right?
Correct, Councilman. And the URA will know that, you know, the prevailing conditions and what the potential pricing would look like well in advance of the actual formal pricing date when any bonds are offered to the marketplace and investors. So they'll, they'll know in advance that the, you know, where rates are, what the estimated proceeds being generated from the prevailing market conditions would be. And so there's definitely time period or consideration ahead of any formalization in pricing or agreement to a bond purchase agreement.
Thank you, Antonio. And when that time does come, it will be just the URA board that votes whether to take that loan or not?
Correct.
Okay. What about dispersions now? If, say we get $40 million on the high end, the URA decides to give 15 million or 10 million to a program, does that have to be approved by council?
No. The amendments that council has already adopted articulate areas of priority, and it requires that within 90 days of definitive pricing, that the URA produce a report outlining those dispersals. But neither, those, those areas of. a report outlining those dispersals. But neither, those, those areas of focus are, as Councilperson Gross articulated in her opening comments, established as goals, not firm requirements consistent with the tax-exempt offering, and that report detailing the allocation across programs would be provided to council essentially as a communication for informational purposes, but not subject to council approval.
Okay. If it comes back, we get forty million for sixty-two and a half, I'm fine with it. And that's part of the problem for me. This is vague. If we were getting thirty million, that's, I'm fine with that. So that's why I can't support it today. But hopefully you'll get the high end, and we'll be able to put those dollars to use right away. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion before going to the second round, and I believe, Councilman Kraus? If not, I'll be brief because the hour is long. I'll simply say, one, for the public's clarity, we are not going into debt. We are simply providing the URA with a two-point-five million dollar payment every year, which, just for all our clarity, is less than a half a percent of our budget, right? So we're not actually talking about a lot of money, which is actually part of the problem, to be quite frank, that we're, the demand and the need is around a hundred million, and we're debating is, is thirty enough, right? So there's a disconnect there. The other thing I will simply say as relates to, is this a wise use of city financing? There's also another conversation that we're not having, because I haven't seen the needs assessment. Bobby did send it out as we're all sitting here. But the prior one said there was a shortage of seventeen-some thousand units of affordable housing. I expect the new needs assessment to come in saying there's probably a shortage of somewhere between twelve and fourteen. You may know the actual number. I don't. But part of the reason that exists, and I'm assuming the needs assessment's going to show this, is that our city continues to lose population because our residents can't afford to stay here. And forget the thirty million we're potentially talking about. If we begin to dip below certain numbers, we will begin losing federal resources. There are other resources that far exceed two and a half million a year that are going to be harmful to us as a city. And so while Rev and I agree with him, spoke about sort of this moral imperative, I think is how he phrased it, for us as a city, there's a very real social and economic imperative that we have to deal with to keep ourselves where we need to be. The social costs of maintaining structures that are not paying taxes, the social costs of losing families, all those add up in many different ways when we come to the table. And Councilman Coghill, I'm sure you'll do it again this year when you ask for more money for demolition, as opposed to investing those dollars into units that could be being rehabbed for affordable housing opportunities. So there's another cost that comes with us not making this investment. I think we have to consider that as well, that eats at our budget every single year. Public safety gets affected, like all these other costs are associated with us not investing in our housing stock. So that's also the reason why this is important to do right now.
Well, you learned a lot from Rev.
So, Councilman, I'm sorry, Director.
Just briefly, you, you fairly encapsulated the findings of the still draft report in that it indicates demand remains high, the, the unit need slightly lower, not as a result of us chipping, having chipped away at the problem, but rather the displacement of low-income residents exceeding the rate at which affordable units are provided. Those findings are fairly stark and fairly concerning for all the reasons you outlined. So I just, just wanted to reinforce your articulation of, of the, the state of the problem.
Thank you. Second round, Councilman Kraus, did you want to get back in?
We lost connection.
You know, only to repeat, I am struggling. I do understand the, the importance of what is before us. I wasn't sure I would vote the affirmative today. I never abstain on the bill, but today I am going to vote in the affirmative. But that doesn't mean that I don't want to continue conversation. So Director Pollock, I think you and I may have some further discussions ahead of us.
Anytime, Councilman. Thank you.
I know that. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Well, that means this hour and a half long conversation was productive. Councilwoman Warwick.
This has been productive, Mr. Chair. It really has. And I appreciate the leadership of really every member here, you know, in that we have very much discussed this and really want to do the right thing and provide for the housing stock that clearly we understand that we need it to do it in the most fiscally responsible manner that we can. So I appreciate everybody's work on this.
Thank you. Councilman Warwick?
Yeah, I'll just, very briefly, and I'm supportive. The, I mean, I, I will say I would like to, just a small language issue, but again, I'm, I'm voting yes, but is that in section three, just where it says shall include language that addresses certain conditions, I prefer it to say that requires certain conditions. It just, you know, at any rate. But just for the general conversation, and I absolutely appreciate what Councilman Burgess was saying about bringing development to black and brown communities, you know, encouraging that development where there isn't development. And that's, of course, very important. I have that issue in my district as well. But at the same time, just in terms of the segregation in our city, I would also like, I would encourage the URA to also, you know, focus on putting this housing in, you know, in places where we have the transit and we have, you know, because I also want to see those, those communities being able to live in Squirrel Hill and downtown and Oakland and these places that are, you know, that are sort of the, the hubs of our city, right? To not be priced out where we are just building the, the housing, you know. And, and I understand that it's a mix of both, but I, I did want to say that. I mean, flats on forward is a great example in my district. You know, I'm very glad to see that, that, that development happening in Squirrel Hill. So as, as someone with, with both, both types of neighborhoods in my district, I, I really think it's a mix. And yeah, so thanks. That's all for me.
Thank you. So with that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One in opposition? Affirmative recommendation? Thank you all for all your hard work on getting us to this date, both the administration, the URA.
Thank you, Councilman LaBelle, and your staffs, all your staffs.
So that exhausts our agenda.
Thank you for blocking me on text message. So I didn't have to do all week.
Meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold regular meeting on Tuesday, July eleventh at ten AM, and our standing committee meeting on Wednesday, July twelfth at ten AM. Speaker registration will close at nine AM the day of the meeting. Call the clerk's office, two-five-five-two-one-thirty-eight to register. Anything from members, Councilman Strasburger?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to call for a post-agenda hearing on PWC, PWSA rate increases, proposed rate increases.
Suck it.
Madam, I'm sorry. Councilwoman, we talked, discussed briefly about doing something with utilities. Are we doing them separately?
Why don't I broaden it just for the sake of flexibility? So I'll amend what I just proposed, if that's still timely, and I'll say, I'll call for, our motion to, to call for a post-agenda hearing on various water and sewer utilities and rate increases.
Second?
Second, with very brief discussion.
Discussion, Kelsman.
So, Councilwoman, thank you. The, you know, this is, this is vastly approaching. And there are suggestions that rate as much as double. And that's a terrifying thought for everyone that we represent. So, Councilwoman, this is very timely, and I'm, I'm glad you called for it. I am more than happy to participate. Thank you.
Thanks. And I want to give credit to Councilwoman Warwick for bringing this to my attention and for, for the idea. So, and Council President for bringing it to my attention as well.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll, we'll work with the clerk to get it scheduled. Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn. Was anyone absent?
Wait, did you want to introduce your person you have working with you?
Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Wait, wait, wait. Do you want to introduce her real quickly?
Oh, yeah, sure. So District Five Office has a new intern, Ten Asia Means.
Can she come to the podium?
Yeah, sure. Do you want to come?
Hey, this is your, this is your moment of fame, okay? But I said to somebody, if we're supposed to be encouraging people to run for office, we probably just discourage this poor young girl. So I apologize for the, for the length of our meeting.
Is she for the bond or not?
Yago, you just introduced yourself, just a little bit about yourself, where you're from, et cetera.
Hi, I'm Ten Asia Means, and I'm from Heeswood. And I'm a senior at Obama. That's really it.
Great. Thank you.
We'll have to get the video for you so you can have it for your memories. Oh, wait, I should get a picture. Did you get a picture of her at the podium?
All those in favor.
This is a memory for me.
Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. Excuse me.
Aye.
You are adjourned.